Boom. So, on your side of the screen, right? You also be able to see some multiplication questions. So what we're gonna do is we are going to dive into some questions, kinda get a little warm up going before we actually dive into like the real math or the lesson of the day. It's good to throw a little numbers at your brain so that way you can kinda visualize like you gotta kinda warm up into it. With math, you can't really dive into it sometimes. You gotta kinda wake your brain up, right? So 12 times 1, anything times 1 is itself, so we know that that is 12. 11 times 9, the best way to do any type of equations that is multiplying by 11, you just take the number, you double it, at least that pertains to 1 through 9. So 99, 5 times 1, anything times 1 is itself, so we doing 5. I was telling y'all last time, right? So with the ASVAB, specifically the math portions, right? It's good to associate numbers, so something like 3 times 8, okay? Your brain should already be thinking along the lines of, you know, 24, right? Um, it's gonna help you because the ASVAB is actually timed, right? So if you take the Pycat, the Pycat is not timed. The Pycat is what you take in the Army Recruiting Office, right? That one's not timed, but the ASVAB that you take at MEPS, my friend, you are gonna be wasting a lot of time if you see something like this, you know, 7 times 7, and you are, you know, 7 plus 7 plus 7 plus 7 plus 7 plus 7. It's gonna, it's gonna, if you do that for every problem, you're gonna be out there hurting, okay? So this is why I like to include this as well, right? 7 times 7, 49, okay? Begin to associate numbers instead of doing drawn out addition, you know, in order to do multiplication type questions, it's good to know the numbers for multiplication itself. So 9 times 12, what y'all got? 9 times 12, what y'all got? This is actually a good question. What is 9 times 12 in the first place? Wanna wait? Yes, indeed. 3 times 6, 18. 11 times 5, 55. 3 times 6, again, what is it y'all? Is it 12? Right, 12? Negative, add 6 more to that, 18. Why this is giving me the same numbers? Alright, here's a good one, 12 times 8. 12 times 8. Y'all go ahead and let me know, what is 12 times 8? Type it in the chat for me. 12 times 8. Is that right? Y'all, 12 times 8, 20? Somebody out there, I felt it, someone of y'all was like, yeah, 20. 96, boom, yes, indeed. 6 times 9, what y'all got? 6 times 9. Come on, we should be getting quicker by this cuz every live session I start with some multiplication type warmups, right? So y'all should be able to know by now, what is 6 times 9? That's a hint. 6 times 9, 5, 50 something, yeah, let's see, 54, boom. 8 plus 8, or 8 times 2, what y'all got? Boom, that's what I'm talking about. I see y'all in the comment section now, y'all with me, y'all with me. That's what I'm talking about. We should be getting quicker with this, right? We should be getting quicker. 9 times 6, what y'all got? I got 54, what y'all got? 54? 3 times 12, ooh, this is a good one. 3 times 12, who's rocking with me out there? Who is rocking with me? 3 times 12, I got 36. Y'all want to speed this up a little bit? 10 times 6, I got 60. See if y'all can keep up now. Alright, 8 times 9. Y'all typing too slow in the, in the comment section for me, man. Y'all typing too slow. 8 times 9, I got 72, boom. 10 times 2, I got 20. 7 times 11, what y'all got? I got 77 myself, personally, because anything times 11 is itself, right? So 7, 7, it's itself double, right? So 2 sevens, boom. Man, we batting at 100%, man. I see y'all, I see y'all rocking with me in the comment section, man. Alright, we at 100%. I got 8, alright, now we're about to do a speed round, alright? 10 or 20 questions really like sped up really quickly, okay? 12 times 6, let me wait to see what y'all put. 12 times 6, cuz I noticed y'all don't be answering for the 12 times tables. Y'all don't be answering, I think y'all afraid of uh 12, the 12 times tables, man. 12 times 6. I hope y'all aren't out there using your calculator either, cheating. 12 times 6, alright. Let's get it, I got 48. Oh, shoot, 72, I should've read the question closer. Man, y'all didn't guide me on that one. Boom, I got 15 on this one. Oh, this is a good one, I got 121. I got 9. 10 times 6, I got 60. 8 times 9, I got 72. 7 times 12, ooh, another good one. 84? Am I right y'all? I'm afraid to hit this enter button, man. I seen the red pop up on the screen, I got one wrong. Yikes. Man, my confidence is shaking now. 3 times 10, 30. Let me do a little maybe like 5 more. 55, right? 4 times 8, I got 32, boom. 3 times 9. I got 27, boom. 2 times 12, I got 24, bam. 3 times 8, I got 24 again, bam. I got 15 on this one. 3 times 5, 15. 11 times 8, 88. 10 times 4, 40, boom. Fantastic work, fantastic. Man, we would've been at 100% had it not been for me on whatever question it asked, right? Silly me, that's what I get for rushing. Uh, it is what it is, right? It is what it is. But you know what? I think that we are warmed up for today's study session, so let's go ahead and start getting into it, alright? So, math knowledge, math knowledge, math knowledge. This is going to be the... This is going to be the lesson for today, math knowledge. Question number 1. If... I mean, I'm gonna have to rewrite this, honestly. I think on the ASVAB, a question like this would be written like... 2x to the exponent of 2, alright? So whenever you see that little upward arrow, so to speak, all it's telling you is that's actually an exponent, so to the exponent of 2, just like how I wrote it down here, okay? Equals... 50, alright? What could be the value of x? Ooh, what a great first question, man. What a great first question. So I'm gonna give y'all maybe 30 seconds to a minute to try to get a head start. Um, the reason why I recommend y'all bringing a calculator to this session is it's be, it's good to have a calculator close by you. You won't be able to use it on the actual ASVAB itself, so I am not trying to lead y'all astray. However, it's going to be good for you to have it in today's study session so that way you can kinda keep yourself in the loop, right? You can have it at arm's reach away um to kinda fact check your own work, alright? So... I want to remind y'all of a term called PEMDAS. Do y'all remember that? They taught us in school, it was like parentheses, exponents, you know, you know, all of this fun stuff, right? Um, in any type of algebraic expression like this, the goal is to get x by itself, right? So, right now, we have 2x to the exponent of 2 equals 50, right? So what we're going to have to do is divorce this 2 from this x, right? So we're gonna divide by 2 cuz right now the 2x is a representation of the 2 is being multiplied by x, right? So we're gonna do the opposite of multiplication and we're gonna divide by 2 on both sides. I think y'all should be tracking what I'm saying, right? Divide by 2 on both sides, leaving us on this side with x squared equals whatever 50 divided by 2 is, okay? So 50 divided by 2, most of us can do this in our head, I'm sure. 50, what's half of 50? 25. Okay? So we have x squared equals 25, okay? Now, here's where it gets interesting. Because we have an exponent of 2 here, we have to figure out what is the opposite? What is the opposite function as having an exponent, right? For those of you who do not remember, in order to get this x by itself, you are going to have to, let me see if I can write this. Do y'all remember what that is right here? You're gonna have to find the square root of 25, okay? The square root of 25. So, what is a square root? This is actually a little bit more tricky to explain than arithmetic reasoning, right? Because I have to use technical math terms, right? So, all it's saying is what, what number times what number equals 25? What times itself equals 25? AKA 1 times 1, 2 times 2, 3 times 3, you know, what times itself equals 25, right? So on this side, we'll have x by itself. And then we're gonna try to figure out what times what equals 25. Alright? In this case, we know, since we did it earlier today, that 5 times 5 equals 25. Alright? 5 times 5 equals 25. We're gonna go to our answer key, we see that A, we have negative 5, B, we have positive 5, C, we have 10, and D, we have both choice A and choice B, alright? So, from this answer key, if you circle B, you wouldn't be wrong. You'd actually be right, right? Because x equals 5. 5 times 5 equals 25. However, for those of you who also remember that in math, a negative times a negative, so let me see if I can write it over here. Negative 5... Uh, times negative 5 also equals positive 25. Let me see if I'm still writing, cuz last time this thing shut off in my face. Does that make sense? A negative times a negative is also a positive, alright? So if you circle B, you would be wrong in this instance, okay? If you circle only A, you would also be wrong. The correct answer would be D. Because positive 5 times 5 is 25, and negative 5 times negative 5 is also 25. So the choice is both A and B, kind of a little trick question. You can definitely expect to see something like this on the ASVAB. So, those who said that they were taking the ASVAB on Thursday, by all means, make sure that you take a mental bookmark of this, alright? Because you, you know, it could be a little tricky. You could just be like, oh, positive 5, and you know, select your answer, but then there goes points because you were too hasty, alright? Alright, we are going to move on to the next question. Remember, math knowledge is trying to see how much do you understand? How much do you understand how numbers work, okay? Negative and a negative is positive. Matter of fact, let me go back to this question. I really wanna reemphasize the fact that a negative and a negative is a positive, right? I'll, let me see if I can write it. If you have something that says something like uh... Negative 3 times 2, okay? I'm just gonna use simple numbers, negative 3 times 2, okay? Well, look at the sign, a negative times a positive is a negative. Anytime the signs don't match up, it's going to be a negative. So 3 times 2, we know is 6. And then a negative times a positive, we know is a negative because they're opposite function, they're opposite uh, yeah, functions or signs, right? So when you have a positive and you have a negative, it's a negative. If you had negative 3 times negative 2, again, 3 times 2, we know is 6. And now we'll look at the signs, okay? What I mean by signs, you're looking at this right here. What you're trying to see is are they both the same or are they different? So because they're the same, your answer will just be positive 6, alright? If you had um, positive 3 times negative 2, wha- what would this answer be, man? What would this answer be? Y'all go ahead and comment in the comment section below, okay? Cuz I want everybody to be on the same page as it pertains to this. In the math knowledge section, your whole answer could be wrong just because you said the answer was positive something instead of negative something, right? So, we know that the number itself will be 6, right? However, look at the signs. We have a positive 3, and then we have a negative 2, okay? Because they're not the same, it's gonna be negative. Whenever you have a positive and a negative, you're going, your answer is going to be negative, okay? And then lastly, let me see, we all know that positive 3 times positive, ooh, come here. Positive 2 equals positive 6. Why? Because both the signs are positive. We are multiplying positive numbers, two positive numbers, okay? I really hope this is making sense, okay? Because these are the things, the little tiny things that's gonna get you on the ASVAB. Alright, so before I move on, do y'all have any questions as it pertains to this whatsoever? Any questions at all? Alright, so, I got you, I see that... Alright, so I won't move on just yet, okay? Because we still have a little bit of confusion. And I appreciate you commenting this because I promise you, you're not the only one, alright? You're not the only one. So, understanding negatives and positives, negatives and positive. How do you know if your answer is going to be negative or positive, okay? That is the question. So... We have positive 8, okay? We're going to multiply positive 8 by another positive 8, okay? What I mean is, look to see what these signs are, okay? Are you multiplying by a positive number or are you multiplying by a negative number? In this case, we have both positives. So if you have both positive numbers, right? Your answer will always be positive. Okay? If you had both negative numbers... And if you're watching this on a live replay, you can always skip past, alright? You can always skip past and go to the next question. But in the livestream, we're gonna make sure that everybody understands to the best of our abilities, alright? So if you have both negative numbers, for example, negative 8 times negative 8, your answer is still going to be... A positive number. Why? Because both the signs, both of these signs are negative. Okay? And then, if you have, how to know if the answer is negative? Oops. The signs don't match. If the signs don't match, you will have a negative number. For example, a positive 8 times a negative 8 is going to give you a negative number. And it didn't matter if it was the opposite way around. A negative 8 times a positive 8, you are still going to get a negative number. Ooh. You are still going to get a negative number. Okay? Because the signs here are different. That's about the best way that I can explain it, alright? It's one of those understanding math type things, alright? So, I just wanted to make sure that I spent a little bit more time to make sure that everybody kinda understands how positive numbers work, how positive answers work and how negative answers work, alright? Boom. Alright, so, let's go ahead and see what this next question says. Great questions, by the way. Alright, so here we go, another math knowledge type question. So math knowledge is really interesting cuz you never know what type of question you're gonna get. Round 27.534 to the nearest whole number. What y'all got for an answer? A, B, C, or D? 27.5, 27.53, 27, or 28? We are rounding to the nearest whole number. What y'all got? What y'all got? What do y'all got? What do y'all got? So, my man, uh, is it the same for adding and subtracting? So the signs for adding and subtracting, no, it's not the same. If you had negative 10 and you had a positive 5, it won't be the same, alright? Don't think of it for adding and subtracting. For example, that's like, if I owed you $10 and then I gave you 5, I would still owe you $5, right? So it's not quite the same for adding and subtracting, but I'll make that in a separate video, alright? Alright, here we go. I see y'all's answers, alright? So, is the answer A, B, C, or D, right? Remember, we are rounding to the nearest whole number. So, a whole number, if we're, if we know that we're rounding to the nearest whole number, we already know that A and B is out of here. Sorry, if you chose A and B, you won't be correct in this scenario. Now, it's just a matter of trying to find out, is it 27 or is it 28? Well, the rule of thumb is that if you have a number, 27.534, okay? This is to the nearest 10th. This is to the nearest 100th, and this is to the nearest thousandth, right? However, we are going to look at this number right here to know whether or not we are going to round down or we are gonna round up. So the rule of thumb is that if you are, if this number that I circled is 5 or higher, you are going to round up, right? To 28, right? So we know that 27 is not the right answer. 28 is the right answer. So if you, if you answered D, you are absolutely correct. Now, when would you round down? If you had a number that was 27.321, we will look at that same number right here. And if it's 4 or lower, right? We are going to round down to the nearest whole number of 27. Bam, I think everybody is tracking this one, so I'm not really gonna get into this one too much. But y'all look like you're tracking cuz y'all are some geniuses watching this video, alright? So I'm gonna go ahead and we're gonna move on to the next question. Great job to everybody who answered correctly on that. Boom, here we go again. Numbers, no explanation, just numbers. So we are expected to solve... I know it's written up there, but let me rewrite it my way. 4 times 3 in parentheses. Do y'all remember who Aunt Sally is? Please excuse my dear aunt Sally. Y'all remember Aunt Sally? 4 times 3 in parentheses, times 3 minus 6, times, uh, times, what is this? 9 divided by 3. Let me see what y'all get for an answer. Why did I write this thing called PEMDAS up top here? PEMDAS, does anybody know what PEMDAS represents or stands for? PEMDAS. PEMDAS is the order that we are going to solve anything that's algebraic in, okay? So what do I mean by that? So P stands for parentheses, okay? E stands for exponents. M stands for multiplication. D for division. A for addition. S for subtraction, alright? So, knowing this, this is something that I would highly recommend. If you don't know this, you need to know this before you take the ASVAB, alright? Because a lot of math knowledge actually hinge, hinges on this term that's PEMDAS, alright? If you didn't know really much else about math knowledge, just knowing PEMDAS might get you through about 50% of the question, okay? Because to some degree, it's going, these are the type of questions that it's gonna be asking, alright? So P, we're gonna look to see parentheses, and we're gonna solve what's in the parentheses first, alright? So looking here, we see 4 times 3. 4 times 3, so let's solve that. 12 in parentheses. And then over here, actually, let me write out the rest. So, times 3 minus 6, times this parentheses over here. 9 divided by 3 is 3. Boom, alright? So, now we continue looking, alright? I just kept it in parentheses just so that way we can kinda visualize. However, at this point, it's not to say like an operation is happening within the parentheses, so you really could erase the parentheses, alright? So we have this, 12 times 3 minus 6 times 3, right? So parentheses, we're good to go. Exponents, do we have any? No, we don't. Multiplication, do we have any multiplication? Yes, we do. So 12 times 3, what is 12 times 3, y'all? 36. And then we have the subtraction, and then we have another uh, multiplication over here. 6 times 3, y'all, what is 6 times 3? 6 times 3, y'all remember? 18. 36 minus 18. Now, we've done our multiplication, there is no division, we have no addition, and now we're left with subtraction. 36 minus 18. Boom. 6, we can't subtract 6 from 8, so we cross that out, we borrow 1, right? So we have 2 on that side, and then there's 6, now that we added 10, becomes 16. 16 minus 8, we know is 8, and then 2 minus 1, we know is 1. 18. Alright, we go to our answer key, A, B, C, and D. We see that C, boom, is 18, right? Right? We were able to get this because of PEMDAS. Please excuse my dear Aunt Sally. Parentheses, exponents, multiplication, division, addition, and subtraction. Alright? Alright, alright? Ha, top vulture, it's all gravy, it happens. Make sure that you guys pay attention to the signs, okay? Because some people try to solve this in their head, and just like you said, you didn't see the division sign, and then it ended up costing you the right answer, but imagine putting in all that work just to end up choosing the wrong answer at the end. So make sure that we take our time on the, on these ASVAB type questions. Alright, so, I'm gonna go ahead and clear this out. Let's jump into the next one, because we are on a daggone roll. Alright, oh boy, fractions. Everybody shaking in their boots now that this fraction business is up. Fractions. Which one of these fractions is the largest? Two-thirds? Five-eighths? Eleven-sixteenths? Or three-quarters? Which one of these fractions? Which one of these fractions is the largest? Which one of these fractions is the largest? Where would you begin? Well, in order to know which fractions are the largest, let me just tell you guys right now. You wouldn't look at the biggest number. For example, you wouldn't look at, oh, well, I see an eleven, so eleven has to be bigger than the rest, okay? There's a certain way that you gotta solve this. Alright? And it starts with finding a common denominator. When you're comparing fractions, you want a common denominator, okay? You want a common denominator. What do I mean? Well, let's go ahead and write these out side by side. Two over three, five over eight, eleven over sixteen, three over four. Boom! So they're all written out side by side, okay? However, we don't know if we're to compare these first two numbers, two-thirds and five-eighths, which one is actually bigger? If this was a pie chart, how would we actually know which is bigger between these two? We wouldn't be able to compare them. So what we would need to do, because we can't really compare a two-thirds of a something to a five-eighths of a something, right? We would need a common denominator. So, what number as a denominator? For all of those, for all you guys who does not understand fractions, uh, how do I, how can I show this? So let's say you had one over two. This number would be the denominator. This number up top would be what's called the numerator. The numerator on top, denominator on the bottom. So when I'm speaking of denominator, I'm speaking of the number that's on the bottom of the fraction, alright? So what number goes into three, eight, sixteen, and four evenly? Well, looking at this, I can tell what I will do is I'll divide these fractions like this. This eight, sixteen, and four, I know that sixteen, they all go into the number sixteen. So what I would do is, in order to make this eight a sixteen, I know that I have to multiply by two. And what you do to the bottom, you also have to do to the top, multiply by two. Right? This sixteen, we'll just keep it as is because we're using sixteen as the denominator itself. And on this side, this four, I would have to times the bottom by four in order to get sixteen, now I have to times the top by four also. Right? So five times two is ten, and we're using sixteen as the denominator. Right? This eleven over sixteen can just come right down. Okay, as is. And now on this side, three times four is twelve. And then the bottom is sixteen. So, now looking at these numbers, I can see that, okay, well, twelve over sixteen is bigger than eleven over sixteen, which is bigger than ten over sixteen. They're all the same used in the same measurement, which is sixteen as the denominator. So I can see that twelve over sixteen is the biggest between these three. So I can X out this eleven over sixteen, we know that that's out of the picture, and this five-eighths, we know that that's out of the picture, okay? This twelve over sixteen or three-fourths is still in the competition. So now I have two-thirds, two over three or three over four. Which one is bigger? Let me draw a little line like this so that y'all don't get confused. Two-thirds or three-fourths, which is bigger? Well, let's see, what number goes into both of these? Twelve, right? We need twelve as the common denominator. So what do I need to do? I need to multiply this three times four. I need to do the same to the top. I need to multiply the four times three. I need to do the same to the top. Okay? Now I have two times four is eight over twelve. And then I have what is it? Three times three is nine over twelve. Which one is bigger? Eight twelves or nine twelves? Nine twelves takes up more of the pie, so this number is bigger. I know that two-thirds, you're out of there, my friend. Three-fourths would be the correct answer. I hope I didn't lose anybody on how I solved that. Is everybody tracking? Do y'all have any questions? So just a quick recap on what I did in order to solve that. I put them all side by side, but I needed a common denominator. Had to have a common denominator. Without the common denominator, you would actually just be guessing, so to speak, okay? So that's why it's so important. When they all had the common denominator, which was sixteen, I can measure them. Twelve out of sixteen is bigger than the other two options that we had. And then I compared the three-fourths and the two-thirds needing a common denominator of twelve. And now that they are both in measurements of twelve, I know that nine is bigger than eight. So three-quarters is the correct answer. I'm gonna go ahead and clear this off the screen, and we can move on to the next question. Continue the pattern. Ah, this is always fun. A continue the pattern type question. We have five, ten, nine, fifteen, twenty, nineteen, twenty-five. What would be next in the pattern? Let me give you all a little thirty seconds to try to figure out the pattern, and then I'm gonna jump in after you guys, and we can see who's right and who is getting voted off of the island. Who is right and who is getting voted off of the island? Try to understand the pattern, try to understand the pattern. When you've gotten your answer, go ahead and comment what you got if you're brave enough. In the comment section, we are all learning together. I like that. I seen that comment in there. We are all learning together. That's what I'm talking about. That's motivational right there, because it's a fact. We are all learning together. Way to keep each other encouraged, way to keep each other motivated, alright? Y'all should've had enough time to crack this code by now, alright? So, what I do in order to try to solve these answers, right? I try to figure out what happened, what, how did I go from one number to the next? How do you go from one number to the next? What happened? What caused it to jump, right? So in order, this five jumping to a ten, right? What happened? Well, man, these numbers be so close, so let me write it. Five over here, ten over here, nine over here, fifteen is next, twenty is next, nineteen, and twenty-five. Alright? So, uh... This, starting with the five and going to the ten, right? What did we do? We added five. Right? Okay. And then we were at the ten. Now let's go from ten to nine. What did we do? We minus one. Alright, to go from ten to nine. Alright, cool. From nine to fifteen, what did we do? Well, in order to go from nine to fifteen, you have to add six. Alright? From fifteen to twenty, what just happened there? Well, from fifteen to twenty, we added five. Right? Fair to say? Am I tripping, or are y'all tracking? Alright, so from the twenty to the nineteen, what do we do? Oh, man, I think I'm seeing a little pattern here. We subtracted, oh! Simba, what are you doing, goofy? You over here talking, what are you doing? We did not subtract nine, y'all. To go from twenty to nineteen, we subtracted one, huh? Well, I see a little pattern forming up here. I see a plus five and I see a minus one. So let's see if we add six, nineteen to twenty-five? We add six. Look at that. So what we have now is what I like to call a little pattern going. We have this pattern here. Plus five minus one plus six. Plus five minus one plus six. Huh! So if the theory holds true, then our next number, we should need to add five, right? So twenty-five plus five, let's continue that. Let's put the, let's put the twenty-five down here. Right? So twenty-five. In order to get to this mysterious number, right? If we continue the pattern, we should need to plus five. So let's go to our answer key. Right? We know that C and D is automatically out of here, because twenty-five plus five, if we're continuing the pattern, is not twenty-six. Does that make sense? So this is how we're ruling out answers. Alright? However, thirty is what we would put here in this question mark space. Right? So we have twenty-five. We got thirty. Okay, then what do we have to do? Well, the next thing was minus one. Right? So thirty minus one would give us what number? Twenty-nine. Plus five minus one. So let's go to our answer key. Oh, snap! A, it looks like you're out of there. Because thirty-five is not the next order. But before we get to B, to actually circle the answer, let's see if this is true, because we also need to plus six. So twenty-nine plus six is what? Thirty-five. Boom! Now we know that our work checks out, we can go over here, or we can circle B. Does that make sense? Because the pattern yet again is plus five minus one plus six. Does that make sense? Does it make sense how we got to B? Boom! Is everybody trackalacking? Awesome, awesome. So I think everybody's on the same page as it comes to this. Y'all wanna do a couple more questions? Because we here, we might as well, right? We are here, so let me go ahead and clear this off the screen. Let's move on. Oh, man, more fractions. So it looks like we have a multiplication question right here. Multiplying fractions, ooh, disgusting. One over four times two over three. One over four times two over three. What do y'all have for an answer? How do we get through this? If y'all haven't already, make sure that you hit that subscribe button, okay? Make sure that you hit that subscribe button, because y'all need to be a part of the family. You here for the, for the uh... ASVAB study sessions, so you might as well hit that subscribe button. Alright, so... Do you send practice tests so someone takes it at their own computer at home? So, I do. For the app, for the people that I work with, right? Uh, virtually, so it doesn't matter where you are in the country. I am also a recruiter that puts people in virtually. So I do, for the people that I'm working with, send them practice ASVABs also, just like I'm coaching you, make sure that everybody develops uh, into being able to pass the ASVAB test. So there are people, yes, that I do send practice tests to. If you are interested in me becoming your recruiter, assuming that you're trying to join the army, feel free to send me an email. Um, the process is pretty streamlined, and I'll send you basically a form to fill out, and um, we can get things cracking from there. So yes, I do send people practice tests as well, just to see where you're at. Alright, here we go. So, multiplication is pretty easy, so what you do is you just multiply going across, right? So one times two is two. Four times three is twelve. Two twelves. We look in our answer key, we don't see two twelves in our answer key. Why is that? Two twelves. We don't see two twelves in our answer key. Why, why, why? Because two twelves can be simplified, okay? Two can go into twelve, right? So, two goes into two one time? Boom! That's what I'm talking about. Two goes into two one time, and two goes into twelve, how many times? Six times. Alright, now we can go into our answer key and see what we got. C, one-sixth. 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 Alright? I also wanna show you guys something while we are on this type of question. Okay? So we had one over four times two over three. What you can also do is something called, you can cross simplify. Meaning, I will look at this two and I will look at this four down here. And I could see, huh, okay, well, two goes into both of these numbers, right? This is called cross simplifying right here, cross simplifying. So, two goes into both of these, so I know that maybe if I come down here and I make this one over two, remember, because two goes into four, right? And then two goes into two one time, so that two up top actually becomes a one over three. Now, we can multiply going across. One times one is one. Two times three is six. So all we did is we cross multiple, uh, we cross simplified, right? Two goes into four two times, which is how we got this two on the bottom here. Two goes into two one time, which is how we got this top. Now that everything is simplified, um, we can multiply going across, one-sixth. Either way, regardless of how you do it, one-sixth is still the answer. Alright? So that's kind of understanding fractions. Understanding fractions. Alright, let's go ahead and jump into the next question. Boom, more fractions again. Let's get this out of the way, more fractions again. Now that I've taught you guys that, y'all should be able to solve this fairly quickly. One fifth times two thirds. One fifth times two thirds. What y'all got, what y'all got? Remember, you're just multiplying going across. Multiplying going across. Make sure that y'all have hit the like button. Make sure that y'all hit the subscribe button. One fifth times two thirds. Alright. Alright, here we go. Multiplying going across, right? One times two is two. Five times three, fifteen. Boom! Two over fifteen, easy enough, right? Y'all don't seem like you had any trouble with this. Two over fifteen, great job, great job. Telling you, man, y'all about to be dangerous, man. I don't know what branch of the, the branch of the military y'all trying to join. But y'all about to be dangerous on this ASVAB. Uh-oh, I got one for y'all now. Three, let me rewrite it. Three divided by three fourths. Three divided by three fourths. Ooh, did I get y'all on this one? Three divided by three fourths. Is it two and a quarter? Is it four? Is it three and three quarters or is it five? I'm still debating if I should go in the Marines. The Marines, don't let it get me started on the Marines, man. You see the hat that I'm wearing right now? Come on now. The Maru-hoo? Don't get me started, don't get, don't, don't, don't get me started on these other branch. Nah, I'm just messing with you. The Marines is a great option, okay? I have nothing bad, I do have many bad to say about every branch, alright? Because it's, each branch is very competitive, right? So the Marines has all kinds of bad things to say about the Army and so on and so forth. But that's actually a great option. Like all jokes aside, all competition aside, uh, Marines is actually a good choice. Um, I've met a lot of Marines, very disciplined people. Um, so if that's actually what you're thinking about, then great. However, if you wanted to join the best branch, I'll leave it there, you know what I'm saying? If you wanna join the best branch, shoot me an email low key. Alright, here we go. Three divided by three fourths. How would we solve this, okay? Well, one, it would make sense to make this three into a fraction, alright? So what we can do is take that three and say three over one, alright? Three over one is the same thing as three, alright? Anything over one is itself, alright? And then whenever you are dividing a fraction, what you have to do is, it's kinda weird. I have never really understood why this is, but it just is. There's certain rules in math that you can't figure out. You just have to accept it for what it is, right? So this division sign actually becomes a multiplication sign. And then this fraction here actually will be it's called a reciprocal, you have to multiply by the reciprocal. Basically, what this is, is just you have to flip the fraction upside down. Alright, so whenever you divide by a fraction, you always have to change the division into multiplication, step one. And then take the fraction and flip it upside down, AKA multiply by the reciprocal. Now what you can do is multiply going across. So here we have twelve over three. Let's look in our answer key. Do we have any twelve over three options? Of course, we do not, okay? We have to take this fraction, twelve over three. If you wanna simplify it or if you wanna divide it out, whatever you wanna do. Twelve divided by three. We know that twelve divided by three is four. That would be your correct answer. We go back in our chart, we see that B, bam, there it is, four. Does that make sense? I know it's kinda weird, however, it is what it is, right? You'd have to multiply by the reciprocal. That is the rule of dividing by a fraction. You don't ever technically divide by a fraction. You just multiply it by the reciprocal or the number, the fraction flipped upside down, alright? Does that make sense? Alright, remember I showed you guys two ways to multiply a fraction? You can multiply going straight across and get twelve over three. Or what you can do is cross simplify as well. So let's do that, just for the heck of it. We're gonna take these two numbers since they're across from each other, one up, one down. Three goes into three one time, so over on this side, you'll have one over one. And then there's nothing to cross simplify on that side. So you would have four on top, one on bottom, okay? One on bottom, multiply going across. Four over one still equals four. Okay, so you can cross simplify. The three goes into this three one time. So that's why you have one here and one there, alright? I think everybody understands this. Alright, so somebody asked, why don't we flip? Why didn't we flip the first number, right? So uh, for now, don't worry about this question, alright? This is Simba just freestyling a question. So let's say we had a question that was like one half divided by um two thirds. Alright, one half divided by two thirds. So this first fraction stays in place. Rule one, don't do anything to this first fraction, alright? When you're dividing my fraction, rule two is this sign becomes a multiplication sign. So let me rewrite it on the bottom. This stays in place. Rule two, turn that into a multiplication sign. Rule three is to flip the second fraction upside down. So in this case, you'll have three over two. And then you would multiply going across, alright? One times three is three. Two times two is four. Look at that, Simba. Your answer would be three fourths. It's just one of those things that, I wish I had like a fancy answer to give you. I really don't. It's just one of those things that you just do it just to do it. But it makes sense in the language of math, alright? So to turn the division into a multiplication and flip the second fraction. Yes, only flip the second fraction. Don't flip the first fraction at all, don't do it. Don't be tempted to do it, don't even look at it for too long. Only flip the second fraction. Y'all wanna la, another example of the same thing? Alright, so let's say we have one half divided by um I don't know, uh, three fourths. Let me see what y'all get for an answer as it pertains to this. We might as well do some practical exercises. Again, if you're just jumping into this video, what I'm doing right now has nothing to do with this question that y'all are looking at up there. This is just me freestyling, okay? To drive home the concept of dividing fractions. How would we solve this? How would we solve this? Not how would we solve this, but in solving this, what would be your answer? Alright, since we are doing some live practical exercises. Step one, the first fraction, what do we do with it? Not a daggone thing, that's what we do with it. We let it be. The first fraction, leave it alone, people, leave it alone, okay? So we still have one half. Rule two, what do we do with this sign right here? We take that sign and we are no longer dividing cause you can't technically divide a fraction. You just have to multiply it by the reciprocal. So we change division into multiplication. Bam, y'all are tracking, I see y'all in the comment section now. Rule three, what do we do? What do we do with this fraction right here? Well, we know that we have to flip it. We multiply by the reciprocal. So by flipping that three over four, we'll actually get four over three. Now we can go into solving it. One half times four over three. Multiply going across or you can cross simplify if you wanna get fancy, right? One times four, we know is four. Two times three is six. If this was your answer right here, you wouldn't be correct cause you wouldn't be able to find this in the answer key unless it was a trick question. Sometimes they do that on the ASVAB. They'll put four over six in the answer cause you'll be so excited to see it. You end up clicking it, you would actually be wrong. Because two goes into both of these numbers, we have to simplify. So two goes into the top number and two goes into the bottom number. Your answer would actually be two thirds, alright? If that's kinda confusing for you and you didn't wanna fall for this little trick right here, this little trap setup, right? Then you can cross simplify like, like I taught you guys, right? So we know that two goes into both two and four, right? So this will become a one and this will become a two, okay? So you'll have one over one times two over three. Multiply going across, two over three, two thirds. You can bypass that whole little setup, little trap right there. That deceitful little snake of a four over six, alright? Alright, so that's how you go about solving these type of questions. Alright, I think y'all are tracking, man. I think we're actually doing pretty good with this. So, ooh, we've been on here for a little while. So I'm gonna go ahead and do one more question. Then we'll get into our cooldown math and call it a day. Always make sure that you simplify your answers, right? So when you always finish one of these, you always gotta see if you can simplify more. Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Always see if you can simplify more in any question that you do, okay? Because even if you get the question right, for example, this four over six right here is right technically. However, if you was to choose that as an answer, you would be wrong, okay? Because you would completely be overlooking this two out of three, which is the simplified version of this four over six. Always make sure that you simplify. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and clear this off the screen. Boom! And let's jump into our last question. Here we, oh, ooh, decimal type question. So we're gonna solve this. Twenty-seven point six five times thirty-one point three. Twenty-seven point six five. I guess I'll rewrite it. This is another thing that low key gets people decimals. Twenty-seven point six five and then what do we have? Thirty-one point three. We are multiplying as our operation. So let me give y'all a little head start on this, maybe thirty seconds to a minute. And let's see if y'all get the right answer. A, B, C, or D? In the meantime, I'm gonna go ahead and answer this question. So when do, when do you livestream so I can be on these every time you live? Great question. So I did a livestream not too long ago, maybe yesterday or the day before. I don't really remember. Um, I'm really kinda sporadic, so I really try to hit Saturdays because that's the days that people are typically off from school and off from work also. But I definitely wanna come on here and start doing this a lot more, so I don't know if I wanna get as deep as in, you know, every other day. But if you guys are down to be on the live, then hey, I might as well come on here, maybe every other day or something like that. And we could do a quick session or a quick, you know, a quick live to help you guys out, alright? Um, it seems like y'all are gravitating towards this, so we'll, we'll see if we can do this a lot more. Twice a week, three times a week? That sounds good to me, if it sounds good to you. Alright, let's see if we can solve this question. Alright, this is why I like to do brain warmups in the beginning, alright? Brain warmups in the beginning. So let's take this step by step. Three times five, fifteen. Carry the one up here, boom! Three times six, eighteen. Plus one, seventeen, I'm sorry, nineteen. What the heck happened there? Nineteen, carry the one. Three times seven, twenty-one, plus one, twenty-two. Three times two, six, plus two, eight. Don't worry about putting a decimal in there just yet, okay? Whenever you're multiplying multiple digits like this, you have to put a zero as a placeholder and then we go again. If y'all see me make any little mistakes like I almost did on this nine, go ahead and comment and expose me, just expose me, alright? Comment in the comment section below so that way I'm not chasing the mistake later on, alright? So we put our placeholder zero and here we go. One times five, we know is five. One times six is six. One times seven is seven. And one times two is two. Now that we put one placeholder zero, the next thing we have to do now is put two placeholder zeros here, alright? And we're about to go again. We know that basically it's gonna be the same as the top. However, let's do it. Three times five is fifteen. We carried that one, we're gonna reuse that same one right here. Three times six is eighteen, plus one is nineteen, right? Carry that one. Three times seven is twenty-one, plus one is twenty-two. So the two goes down the bottom here and that two goes up top here. Three times six, I'm sorry, three times two is six, plus two is eight. We got all these mumble jumbo numbers here and we need to add each line. We are adding each line. So five plus zero plus zero, we got five. Nine plus five, I almost multiplied these numbers. Nine plus five, we have fourteen, carry our one. One plus two is three, plus six is nine, plus five is fourteen. Carry our one. One plus eight is nine, plus seven is sixteen, plus nine again is twenty-five, if I'm not mistaken. Remember, if y'all catch me making a mistake, just let me know. Two plus two is four, plus one is five. And then eight plus another is eight. Alright, so now we have a big number here with no decimals. So how do we know where to put our decimals? We're gonna go back to the question itself and let's see how many decimals. We're gonna go back to the question itself and let's see how many decimal places is taken up in this question. So this three is one decimal place from the, from the right. And this decimal here is two decimal places from the right, okay? That's a total of three decimal places. So now what we would do is we would take this decimal and we would move it one, two, three decimal places to the left, giving us eighty, I'm sorry, eight hundred and fifty five point four, four, five. Okay, I hope that made sense right there. We look at the decimals, okay, and we count how many decimal places over. Another way I guess I can write it, just, I like to do this from all, uh, explain the same thing in, in different ways because it helps people learn, okay? And then this one down here, we had thirty one point three. So basically what you can do is you can just count the decimal places like this. One, two, if you want to put a little two over here, you can, and then one. So this two plus one, we know we have to move the decimal place three places to the left in our answer. One, two, three, giving us eight hundred and fifty five point four four five. Go to our answer key. Uh-oh, 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 uh-oh. Uh-oh. We look like we forgot to carry the one somewhere. This is exactly what I, I knew it. Alright, so where did I make a mistake? Let's see, right? So what did I get? Eight fifty five? Let's see, five plus zero, that's five. On this one, it's fourteen. Four, we carried the one. We got three. Uh, nine plus five is fourteen again. Man, y'all were supposed to let me know where I made a mistake, man. Nine and nine, that's eighteen. Um, okay, gotcha. No, eighteen, that's right. Plus seven, fifteen. Man, y'all were supposed to let me know where did I make a mistake? Now I have to chase down this mistake. Alright, you said it's supposed to be eight sixty five? Eight sixty five? Oh my goodness gracious. What happened here? Fifteen? Boom, boom, boom. Oh, I got it. I got my mistake. Here's my mistake right here. I carried the one. If we go to the column before, we had one plus eight, that's nine. Plus seven is sixteen. Plus nine is twenty five instead of fifteen. Ah, we hunted down this little deceitful snake right here, alright? This little deceitful little one right here. Uh-huh, so this is supposed to be a two, meaning that two plus two plus two is actually supposed to be, this is supposed to be a six. Meaning that our answer over here is supposed to be eight, six, five. Boom, woo! Eight six five point four four five. Now let's go to our answer key. Are we confident now? Look at this, A, right here. Eight six five point four four five. Man, we hunted it down. We hunted it down. Look, I make mistakes too. I'm trying to tell you. I make mistakes too, alright? Forgive me, forgive me, forgive me, but fantastic job keeping me on track. So that's what we have for today's study session, alright? I know it was kind of a lot. We dealt with a bunch of different things like fractions, specifically dividing by fractions, multiplying by fractions. We got to throw in some decimals in here. Um, learning PEMDAS, going over some PEMDAS review and everything like that. So there was a lot of, um, information in today's study session. I hope that it was beneficial to you. If you're taking the ASVAB sometime soon, make sure that you take your time. Don't rush it. Don't rush it. Don't rush it. And if there's a section for you to put as much emphasis in, it's the math knowledge and the arithmetic reasoning session, section, okay? After that, make sure you do your best in the word knowledge and paragraph comprehension sections to help boost your score as much as possible. And then of course, the general science as well, okay? Um, but take your time. Don't rush it. Everything is important. It's very important. So if you're joining the Marine Corps, I wish you the best. Make sure that you come back and let us know how you did on your ASVAB. You said it's on Thursday. That's right around the corner. I'm excited for you. So come back and let us know how you do. And to the rest of you all who are watching this either in the lives, uh, session or the YouTube replay, uh, feature, I just want to say y'all have a blessed one. I wish you the best as well. Always remember that success is made by actions. Lord, thank you for allowing us to have a study se- uh, session together once again. May you help them pass the ASVAB as they go and pursue joining the military regardless of what branch. So I just want to say thank y'all for joining. Y'all make sure that you stay blessed. Always remember that success is made by actions. So get up, go grind. I'll see you next time.